Hello my friends. Hello, hello, my health, freedom-loving friends and my freedom-loving friends. I'll wait for a minute for some folks to join, so I'm not just talking into the nothingness of social media. Checking my microphone and I actually have a little bit of a light here. Hi Kylie, oh my gosh, what a day, right? I saw your, I don't, I don't, I can't say that I saw all of people's comments, but I saw some of people's comments. And I saw a lot of Kylie's comments. And just so you all know, if you're commenting on my own personal profile, I can't see that on here. I can see comments from Health Freedom Idaho and Misty for Idaho, but I can't see comments from my own personal profile. So if you want me to see your comments or your questions, then go to those pages. I go to Misty, my own personal profile, just so more people see it. Hi Shay. Oh, hi Andrea. Hi Laura. Yeah, some food and a moment of rest. Well, I got a little bit food and I have a glass of red wine. That was really the first thing. I was like, I got home, actually I had some food in my bag and I ate my food on the way home and I was like, I need a glass of red wine. This is quite a day. Thank you Erin, you guys. I had, I had more hugs and prayer today at the Capitol than I could have ever imagined. I, it's not comfortable to be the person standing up for something you believe in. And it's not easy and it's not something you want. But at the same time, freedom of the press and freedom of speech is so important. And so I, I want to protect that for my children. How do we hold legislators accountable if we don't have freedom of the press and freedom of speech? How do we hold anyone accountable if we can't have a front row seat to show people, to be the eyes of the people? That's the whole spirit of the Constitution on freedom of the press. That's the spirit of the, of that law. It's, that's the spirit, to be free, to put eyes on these people and hold them accountable. And you can see today that some people don't want to be held accountable. And they want citizen journalists to be removed. Oh. Yeah, I saw that too Becky. And I, I haven't consulted an attorney and I'm not an attorney to be able to speak on what the Attorney General ruled. I probably need to do that next. I've read the Idaho state law and just from that, I disagree with him. And I think it's a bully tactic. Yeah, I should have been prepared to speak to that. It doesn't, you know, look, I mean, I've read those laws. And the fact of the matter is, we can in the state of emergency and it must be ended. And that's why the House brought that resolution, because we want this state of emergency ended and they are doing the work of the people. And then it goes to the Senate, just like I've been saying, it goes to the Senate and it gets shut down. And it's so amazing. And, and I am inspired because, I mean, I've been exhausted. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, I've been exhausted. Somebody said they watch me because I provide hope. And I'm like, wow, something is coming across. I don't always feel, yay! Cause I don't always feel the hope, you know, sometimes I feel really discouraged. But I do, yeah, I believe it was a setup as well. And I, and I actually figured that out as I decided to, sorry, I'm getting like sidetracked and squirreled. Let me finish about, about the AG's letter. I mean, the people want the state of emergency to end. And the representatives that brought this bill would not have done so and supported this bill and voted this bill through would not have done so if they believed it was out of line of statute. I think they need the people behind them in, in, in full force tomorrow, meaning the people need to show up at the Capitol tomorrow. And demand that the bill is heard. I mean, it has, it's a resolution, I'm sorry, it's a resolution and it needs to be heard. And you know why? The AG is coming against it? Because the governor can't veto it. And that's just the facts. The governor can't veto it, so they had to find a way to stop it. They don't want to end the state of emergency. It's sad. So Senate Pro Tem Brent Hill does not want to let the House concurrent resolution on the floor to be voted on. I'm reading from a email that I got from Freedom Man. So if you're not on the email list from Freedom Man PAC, go to the website and sign up for his emails. So since I am not actually prepared to totally speak to this, other than I've read those statutes and I believe from my point of view, and I'm not an attorney or a judge, that they're completely in line with what statute says. Meaning the bill that was brought is, is correct. And this was the way, I mean, we did a lot of analysis leading up to this day and we, not that we brought the bill, but looking at what is the remedy for the people, this was one of the avenues of the remedy for the people. And we were so excited when we saw that it was brought. And they were willing to do it and it was passed through the House. And it looked like, you know, I mean, I, I had a feeling it was going to be a fight in the Senate, but I thought, I didn't realize the AG would come to bat for the governor. And that's what he's done. That's what he's done with that letter. So Senate Pro Tem does not want the House, want to let House concurrent resolution on the floor to be voted on. And according to Diego with Freedom cronies and he's going to do what he can to protect Brad Little. Generally speaking, and this is why I love Diego with Freedom Man, and you're about to see why I laughed out loud, because people aren't brave enough to say the truth these days. And when you get something where somebody's actually speaking the truth, it feels so good to your soul. The Senate is full of corrupt weenies. Anyway, which is why we need to put on so much pressure. Additionally, we're being told that several senators are stating that the resolution is unconstitutional. And Diego with Freedom Man PAC says, "Don't believe these pathetic liars." Here's, oh, good, he puts it in here for us because he's awesome. Here is the exact text for Idaho State Code 461008. Here's the quote, you ready? "The legislature by concurrent resolution may terminate a state of disaster emergency at any time. The House concurrent resolution is 100% legal and constitutional." And I, yeah, yeah, and here it comes. Here's come some truth bombs. What is immoral and unethical is the, is for these lying senators to lie to their constituents and tell them that they won't vote on HCR1 for whatever reason they come up with. I don't think he even saw with the AG, I don't even think he saw what the AG came out with. He already knew what was going to happen. That's, that's, I think he already knew. You have them running scared. I love this part. They don't want their name to go down as a no vote. Ah, he's right. Look, I, I'm reading this with you right now. I haven't read this all the way through. There, he, yeah, he's absolutely right. They know that they will pay the price if they vote no, so they want to pawn off their responsibility so they can say that they never in the first place. Don't let them bully you. That's so true and it happens all the time. They stop bills with the chairman so that the whole committee and the floor doesn't have to vote, so they're not held accountable for their vote. He's exactly right. Another lie we have heard already is that the vote to end the resolution will eliminate the CARES Act, 1.25 billion that was given to Idaho from the federal government. That is also a lie. Idaho already has his money. Oh, I thought he said has his money. It has this money. Idaho already has this money and it was given to the state of Idaho in one lump sum months ago. However, terminating, terminating the state of emergency, which is what HCR1 does, will give the legislature oversight over this money, instead of allowing Brad Little to act like a tyrant king and spend it on his own, however he wants. Nice. We must get HCR1 passed. So what Freedom Man is saying on his website is, look, we need to bombard Senate Pro Tem Brent Hill's office with all patriots demanding that he vote on HCR1. I'm not in disagreement with that. I obviously haven't had time to do total diligence and research it myself because of what took place today. And I'm literally just getting home, but that sounds about right to me. I skimmed what the AG had to say and Diego with Freedom Man seems to be spot on to me. Brent Hill. Let's, so I, so the patriots need to show up tomorrow and demand that HCR1 is heard. Okay, so that's something for tomorrow. Now I'm backing up a little bit because I got squirreled from the comments. I did. Let's see, so about today, what was the comment? Yeah, somebody, yeah, Larinda said, I believe it was a setup. Yeah, I think that Representative Cheney, as you can see from the clown show that he's had in his he's exposed a couple, he's exposed himself, really hardcore, like he has completely exposed himself. People are seeing his behavior and the way he acts. And you can sit at that, you know, desk one day, but you can't sit it at the next. You know, I mean, it's just outrageous how he's behaved in his committee. I'm not sure if you are all aware, but he hasn't even allowed the bills to be presented before having people testify on the bills. Can you even imagine? I mean, you kind of know what they're about. They're supposedly online. As you could see from my feed today, the online, the wifi there is not awesome. And especially if you're just relying on your own phone wifi and you're not able to get on the Capitol wifi. And so you could see how that was on my phone. And we don't have access to the password. So you could see from my live feed today, it's glitching in and out. So how do people have access online to look over these bills that they're supposed to testify on? And that's what he's doing in his committee. I have never seen such a thing. So here we go. Now, he, I'm sitting at the, the press area that has a sign that says this is, this is held for the press, right? So I have a press pass. And, and I decided to go sit there. Which I have done since I got my press pass. That's what I've been doing ever since I've had it and I've been using it and everything's been fine. All of the sudden, hey, yes, thank you for posting his police reports. And also, I think in that same link is the letter from his mom. I really think that's one of the most important things to look at about Greg Cheney and understand, you guys, he's running unopposed. So of course he's the chosen one to be, to behave this way. He feels completely, you know, empowered to behave this way because nobody's running against him. And I mean, and that's a shame in that district. He's in Caldwell, I believe. So somebody really needs to rise up. In fact, I think, I mean, a recall was mentioned many times today, so maybe somebody will take that up. I mean, he's not completely untouchable by the people, even though he thinks that he is. Yeah, so Kelly just posted that for you Kylie. So anyway, you know, just the, the short of it is that he asked us to move from that table. And I, you guys, maybe you don't all know, but I have an autoimmune disease. And maybe you can't see on the camera, but I shake. And so having the table and having my phone on a tripod provides for you all to have a better view. And also allows me to plug in my phone so that it doesn't die. So anyway, I've been really thankful for that table, for those reasons for you all, because I know you see the shake and I know it's not awesome and I apologize for that. My heart is in the right place, but the shake is there. And especially when I'm tired and hungry and stressed. So I'm especially shaking. And try as I might, I just can't stop it. So I'm so thankful that I have the press pass. And I should grab that. And, and I can sit there and plug in and have power and have a stable table for you. And so anyway, that's, that's the thing. So anyway, he asked us to move. I think you can see from my video, I was asking very nicely, trying to understand the rules. So now I have the rules and it has brought up a very big issue that I didn't even know existed. Okay, are you ready for this? There is a Capitol Correspondence Association. You have to be a part of this special club to get the brown badge, I found out about. Don't be confused, it's not the brown shirt, it's the brown badge. And if you don't have the brown badge, you're not special enough to sit up there with press. It just said it was reserved for press. And I have a press pass, so that's what I was using. So it says, "The Capitol Correspondence Association is the entity responsible for credentialing news reporters who cover sessions of Idaho Legislature." Pursuant Okay, so it's on to explain, you have to be credentialed. So I don't know if you guys have read the Constitution, but it says the press is supposed to act freely. Free, free press. Does this sound freely to you? Doesn't sound free to me. A key point is to distinguish between news reporters who have certain types of access to the state Capitol during session and lobbyists who have different types of access. So they're trying to separate journalists and lobbyists, which I understand. I'm not a lobbyist, I'm an activist. I don't get paid for what I do. And with Health Freedom Idaho and, and I am credentialed with Range Broadcasting Network. That's where I have my press pass. So I guess their point is that anybody can go and, you know, laminate something and make it look like they are credentialed. Well, okay, so maybe, oh wait, let me get to the good part. The officers of this special club, current officers of the Capitol Correspondence Association are President Betsy Russell. Okay, standing committee members Joan Carton Hansen, Melissa Davlin, Kevin Richard, Nate Brown and James Dawson. So I'm not sure why they would allow people who are their competitors, especially competitors who are telling the truth to go and, and have, and be credentialed when, when, yes, lobbyists are required to wear an official green name tag. Exactly, which I'm not one, so I don't have a green tag. So anyway, this is obviously a problem because citizen journalism is on the rise and we all know the reason. I'm not going to get into a rant here because I have other things I want to talk about. We all know why citizen journalism is on the rise. And so basically because of this Capitol Correspondence Association, citizen journalists don't have the same access as MSM. Which we actually, Brian and I were pointing out just today before we got asked to move, as a matter of fact. And I've been pointing it out every time I'm there. I'm like, look at them, they have special access. Even if I'm where the media is, MSM is actually always closer because they have the bigger So I really think that needs to be done, this now that we're aware. And citizen journalists need to have also some kind of access. Because really, I've given you all views because of the press pass I have and the people have been honoring that, that, that I've been able to get up close for you all. And then, as you know, I got the better microphone and I'm trying to do the best I can as a citizen journalist to give you access to what's taking place. So obviously something needs to happen with this issue. And I really hope that whatever, you know, what happened today at the Capitol will be a springboard of action so that we can change these rules and actually have citizen journalists access at the Capitol unrestricted, free, free press, right? Okay, so moving on from all of that political stuff, I really want to get to the most important thing that's on my heart. And that is the day of prayer at the Capitol tomorrow. Tomorrow at 7:00 PM, Tabby Jolly, who's a dear friend of mine and one of the most sincere, I don't know what better word to use than one of the most sincere people I've ever known. Really a sincere heart for God. And she has helped to put together this amazing day of prayer tomorrow. She called me, you guys, and I could hear the choir practicing and it was, it was beautiful and it was exactly what my soul needed. So that's why I posted this, what it is, is that we all, we need him now more than ever. Today showed us a different side of Idaho that Idahoans have not seen. I don't ever want to experience it again. It was, it was ugly. And it was, it was sad for the future of our kids. So what we know is that we need God and we need prayer. And we need to come together and unite at our Capitol. So I know tomorrow is a big day. It's going to be a long day and they count on us growing weary and wearing out. And I'm sad to say that because of my autoimmune disease, I'm going to have to do some maintenance tomorrow in order to be at the Capitol in the evening. So I'm really sorry to you that I can't be there. My body has been under a lot of stress. And the stress really aggravates my autoimmune disease. So even though there's no place on earth I'd rather be than at the Capitol tomorrow for you, I'm going to have to do some treatments and put my body back together. I often refer to myself as Humpty Dumpty. And my husband, Dr. Michael Carlfeld, has to put me back together again. So I'm going to do that tomorrow because I really want to be at the day, at the, at the prayer day tomorrow. That's, that's my heart. I don't know if you all know this, but on the day that I got a spotlight and I shined up on the Capitol and the state of emergency, I just said in my live video, you guys, we need to go, we need to surround this Capitol. I'm just going to put it out there and see what God does with it and help me just put this out there, right? And, and then Tabby Jolly called me and was like, I have 20 volunteers, let's do this. And I was like, oh my gosh, this is awesome. God is on the move. God is affirming to me that he's here and he's got us. And, and yes, he's calling us to him. He's calling us to him. So I need to get some treatments tomorrow so that I can be there for the prayer at 7:00. And I really believe that's where our power is at anyway. So we have a couple of things that are obviously really important tomorrow. And we have to be at the Capitol and we have to demand that we hear the resolution for the, for ending the state of emergency. The other thing we have to do is pray and that's at 7:00. We've got a beautiful choir. We've got, oh gosh, I gotta get Tabby information about the horn at the beginning. And and I wanted to surround our beautiful Capitol with people praying together. And I really believe that's what God wants and that's why he like brought all the volunteers. Sorry, it's getting so dark. I look kind of weird, all lit up. I do have a little light here, but it was dark in my house too. And I just needed some fresh air after being in the Capitol all day. So I know there will be plenty of citizens there filming everything tomorrow, giving us eyes at the Capitol. And I will be praying really all day long. And I hope that you will please pray with me for, not only for tomorrow during, at the Capitol, but that the Lord will protect our prayer time at the Capitol because we know that the enemy doesn't want it. He doesn't want us to be free and he doesn't want us to assemble in prayer. Oh gosh, thank you Audrey, because I look, I feel like I'm like through the wringer. So anyway, I, I hope you guys that, that let's come together in prayer. Please let everybody you know, I've already posted the event link in my own personal profile at Misty for Idaho. The original event is in Misty for Idaho. You can find it there. And, and share it everywhere because even if we can't unite on some of these dividing issues, meant to be dividing, meant to divide us to the core. We can unite on prayer. Even if it's not exactly how you think it should look, even if it's not exactly the scripture you think it should be, even if it's not exactly how the choir, they're not singing the right songs. That is not what this event is about. If you have all these things that you feel that, you know, things that you feel passionately, you know, like, oh, this is the thing and yeah, we're not going to do it. Look, just lay it down. Just lay it down. It'll be there for you to pick up afterwards. Just lay it down. All the things that divide us and let's just come together with one heart, seeking our Lord. And please pray that the Lord protects our event. The last thing I want to see on our day of prayer is our Capitol surrounded by police cars and police officers in full gear. That just, that's actually what's on my heart tonight and what made me come and go live with you. Even though I'm exhausted and I'm hungry and my body hurts is that I cannot imagine having our day of prayer tomorrow with what I saw today. Which is our police officers in full combat gear. The Idaho State Police and all the cars with their lights all over the place. That is not the vision I want to have for our day prayer tomorrow. So please pray for us, you guys. We, we need to go and be able to pray to our Lord without any interference. Really from anybody that would want to interfere with our, our right. It's at 7 o'clock. Thank you Amy. It's 7:00 PM Mountain Time. I know there's prayer happening up north. I'm not exactly sure what time. But I can tag somebody who can give you some information to that if you want to in the Coeur d'Alene area, join in prayer. I don't think there was supposed to be one in Moscow, but I haven't heard anything that actually got pulled together. But it doesn't matter. You guys can unite in prayer wherever you are. Seriously. Wherever you are, 7 o'clock. I actually, I actually been posting about a prayer wave and I'm terrible at keeping up on it on, because there's so much other news all the time. But I would love, oh, thank you Simona, 6:00 PM. Yes, Pacific time, so 7, so 7:00 PM our time in Coeur d'Alene. So where Simona says 6:00 PM Pacific time, you can ask her more questions if you want to join their day of prayer. And I mean it, like, let's just cover our state in prayer. It doesn't have to be some organized event. Call your friends, call your neighbors, call your, your family. And just say, look, have you all been seeing what's been going on at the Capitol? Like whatever it is, whether, whatever you agree or disagree with, it just doesn't matter. Just get together and pray. It's 7:00 PM Mountain Time. It's seven PM mountain time. Now it's so important. Now more than ever. Six PM, uh, Pacific time. Let's just unite and cover our state in prayer. I'm just checking the comments. Yes, Rosie, Dr. Rosie, may the Lord's angels surround the Capitol. Amen. Yes, Lord, we need your, need your angels. Yay. Thank you, Jamie, joining us in prayer and CDA. Isn't that awesome? The power of prayer. The power of prayer in our whole state. Yeah, I mean, like shaking my head because I'm like in disbelief that it's happening. Covering our prayer, our covering our state in prayer. Just praying for our state, praying for our nation. We need prayer. Beautiful prayer and beautiful worship. Thank you, Becca. It was an emotional day and I'm sorry I'm bringing the emotion to the evening. Okay, so, um, those are the two calls to actions, right? It looks like, um, really, really just, I love Idahoans. We actually, I still believe we have the best state in the nation. And, um, okay, I'm going to end on a, I'm going to end on a good note. I've been in activism for a few years now. It was the most encouraging and beautiful thing today to see Idahoans wake up. And I filmed a beautiful mama who was like, I've been asleep. I haven't been paying attention, but I'm awake now and I'm here and I'm taking action and I will be here and I will be standing for my rights and for the rights of my, of fellow citizens and my children. Oh, thank you, David. Yay. David is coming anew, anew. Yay, thank you. And, and see, this is what I mean. This is, this is the perfect example. He, look, the citizens are getting on fire and it honestly is something that I've been wanting for so long. And really all of us activists who've been working so hard for so long have wanted more citizens to take action, knowing that we're not enough. And so more citizens are. Oh, good. Peter's joining tomorrow. Good. Um, that's what's happening and it's beautiful. So take heart, my friends. Definitely take heart. We are still free to gather at the Capitol and pray. We still have to some degrees our freedom of speech. We still have our freedom to assemble. We still have our freedom of religion. And if we don't exercise those things, we're going to lose them. So tomorrow during the day, we need to be using those freedoms at the Capitol. And we need to be using them, um, during the, the special session and then also at seven o'clock to pray. So go to special session. Hold the legislators accountable to what you want. Go grab some dinner and then come back for prayer. That's what we have to do. It's, this is the time. Okay. I'm going to end this video where it's all weird and dark and my face is all lit up and weird. Yeah, maybe so. Larinda said, may, you know, Cheney thinks that if Ammon is in jail, no one will show up to the Capitol. Maybe so. But I don't think so. I've seen more citizens on fire for freedom than I've ever seen in my life. And that is beautiful. Take heart for I have overcome the world. Amen, Simona. Thank you. Take heart for I have overcome the world. Okay. So I'm going to rest tomorrow. I'll be praying, I promise. And trying to get my body back together so that I can be there at seven for prayer. And you, I promise you, you don't want to miss it. It's, it, I heard the choir singing and it was like angels. Our spirits need that. I will see you tomorrow night at the Capitol. Seven PM and up north, six PM and it's going to be awesome.